So we just completed a special workshop and council now this brings us to a regular meeting, City Council. Let the record show that council is present except for Councilmember Watten who was excused. So please join and stand with me to say in the pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew, would you please lead the pledge?
It is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we now move to our first item of regular business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew, second by Councilmember Holloway. Is there any discussion? You see, Councilmember Lassay?
Yes. Move to remove... Did it already get removed? Am I looking at the right agenda?
If you're looking for the Agenda Bill on our community development, it's not there.
Okay, I'll just point out to the city clerk that if once the agenda has been published with the item, it needs to be removed by council.
If I may for a moment, please. I believe the Agenda Bill you're referencing was never on the agenda.
Right.
The correction that was sent out was for Agenda Bill, excuse me, AB 75, not AB 70. AB 70 was never on the agenda.
As of Saturday morning, AB 70 was on the agenda. So we'll move on.
Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew.
Yeah, I wonder if we could just scroll down. I want to make a motion regarding the ordering on the agenda. Let's see.
If anyone can go to the top?
Yeah, a little bit higher up. Sorry, moved too fast for me.
Further up?
Keep going. I know we can find it.
Presentations. Further up?
Further up.
Right there.
There we go. Move to reorder the presentation on muni bond market and public financing discussion to the first item in committee of the whole.
Second. It was moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew to move muni bond market and public financing discussion to committee of the whole and second by Councilmember Robinson. Any discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Okay, so the Councilmember Holloway.
As long as we're in point of order. I thought when we did excusing of council members during the roundtable, that was specifically for the roundtable, and we said we would have to do it again for council.
Okay, did state who was present. The only person who's missing currently is Councilmember Watten.
So move to excuse Councilmember Watten from the council meeting tonight.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right. Councilmember Watten is excused. Moving on, final approval. Do you have any other changes to the agenda?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lassay?
Under Committee of the Whole added discussion about committee chair and liaison appointments.
We do have that under approximations and appointments, under number five.
Oh, I didn't see it. It's kind of...
Okay, it's right there.
Not really under there. Okay.
Right, so it's already... Okay, so...
I missed it.
Final approval of the overall agenda with moving the presentation to committee of the whole and everything else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right, the agenda is approved with the change. Okay, moving on. Our next item of business is proclamation and Agenda Bill 22-092, Parks and Recreation Professional Day proclamation number 13. So whereas the city of Snoqualmie council recognizes that the field of parks and recreation is diverse and comprehensive system that improves personal, societal, environmental, and economic health, and whereas the city council recognizes the importance and benefits of park and recreation services that enriches the lives of its community members and helps makes this community a desirable place to live, work, play, and visit. And whereas the city council supports the skilled work of park and recreation professionals to strengthen community cohesion and resiliency, connect people with nature and each other, and provide and promote opportunities for health, healthy living, equity, and environmental sustainability. And whereas the city council values the essential services that park and recreation professionals and volunteers perform to provide recreational and developmental enrichment for children, youth, adults, and older adults, and to ensure our parks and recreational spaces are clean, safe, and inclusive, welcoming, and ready to use. Now therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of City of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim July 15th is Park and Recreation Professionals' Day. There we go. Next item is swearing in ceremony for Captain Brian Lynch, who will take the oath of office. Chief Phipps, would you please introduce our new police captain and say a few words?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce Brian Lynch, our new police captain. Very thankful that we had a good process. Process started, as you know, Captain Omquist left to be chief in neighboring community and left an opening for police captain. And we were very fortunate to have some very good people apply. And it really came down to what I'll talk about is, and Mayor Larson mentioned it the other day, is when it comes down to it, I look for somebody with a servant's heart. And this gentleman has a servant's heart. But a little bit about him, not too much, but obviously, if I don't go a little bit about him, I'm highly outnumbered here. So, and this is impressive in itself, just the level of support that he has. And it just kind of confirms that I know I made the right decision and I thank the mayor for confirming that decision. Graduated from high school in Maryland and then made his way to Seattle after graduating from high school. Like some that we've hired recently, and I'm sure the fire chief will appreciate this, he initially started in EMS and fire area and then decided maybe he'd go to the other side and go to police. And we're very fortunate about that. He started in Enamqua in law enforcement and then spent some time there, eventually ending up in Black Diamond. Before this process even started, I was already familiar with Brian. He's the commander of the Major Crimes Task Force for the Small Coalition of Police Agencies, which we are a part of, and he commands 17 detectives in regards to that, which is very commendable. But in our discussions with all the chiefs on that committee, his name would always come up as the guy to do it, the guy to be commanding that kind of a level of... Think about the stuff that they do. They respond to all these agencies' requests for significant incidents, whether it be homicide, sexual assault, or other crimes that a small agency really doesn't have the resources or maybe the tactic or the training to handle. They call Brian and his team comes out and investigates it. So that says a lot about who he is and his expertise in this area. But servant heart, going back to that. Initially, I had read an article, and I was doing some research on my own, about Brian. And I came upon an article, and essentially, it was a newspaper talked about how he made a traffic stop on a young lady that was probably going a little fast that morning going to work, made a car stop on her, and while talking to her, the vehicle basically stopped running, had mechanical problems, stopped running. He diverted his attention from maybe the traffic citation to maybe trying to assist her. Ultimately, got her a ride home, got the vehicle in a parking lot for the rest of the night. Next morning, took care of getting the car repaired. So when he went and picked her up, or she was picked up and brought over, the vehicle was ready to go and repaired. That is a Snoqualmie police officer right there. We're doing more than just writing those tickets. We're also helping our community be better and we're being public servants, and that's a civil servant. And it just goes into account the fact that he's been Officer of the Year twice. He's been a civilian servant of the year once, and he's also DUI Officer of the Year. So he's being recognized for his work, not only for police work, but also for doing stuff that's... And he's also, I want you to talk a little bit about that when you have a moment about the fill-the-boot thing. And so I think that's very commendable. I think you should probably mention that in your talks. I look about team player. He's a team player, obviously. I talk about communications. He communicates very, very well. He's a good, easy person to talk to. You almost feel like you know him already when you talk to him. And ultimately, he's not afraid to do some of the things that he and I in this department, these officers, are going to be doing in the future. You can tell the support he gets. In fact, it was the officers in our police department that came to me and said, this gentleman needs to be looked at. Can you try and see if he will apply, if he's interested? So they're the ones that went out. Turned out, they weren't even friends with him. They didn't really know him except for their interactions with him during work, during the Major Crimes Task Force. They respected him to that level that they thought, we would like him to be our captain. And so I valued that tremendously. So mayor, if you'd like to do the swearing in?
Thank you.
Can you raise your right hand?
Right here? No? Can anyone hear? Oh, there we go. Okay. I, Brian W. Lynch.
I, Brian W. Lynch.
Having been duly appointed to the position of police captain of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington...
Having been duly appointed to the position of police captain of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington...
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law...
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie...
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America. So help me God.
And the laws and the constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America. So help me God.
Excellent. And then we have, I'd like to welcome Captain Lynch's wife, Tina, who will be pinning his badge. Okay, and then also, we have his sons Hunter and Max and daughter Olivia. And Mike and Deb Pepping, right? His in-laws. Come join us up here.
So how do you become DUI Officer of the Year? Does it...
It takes DUI arrests?
Oh, okay. Well, that makes a lot more sense.
Did you want to get any pictures?
Everybody's already up here. Already up here, you might as well stay.
This is the great thing about being in position one.
One thing is your other badge, your old badge. And then we also have a challenge coin on the police department. And it's always an honor to be the one to give you that challenge coin. And so it's an honor to give you that challenge coin.
I knew I had to write this down or I would not remember what I wanted to say. Thank you, Mayor Ross, city council members and guests. There are so many people that I owe a big thank you to throughout my career who have made it possible for me to be here tonight. But specifically, I want to thank Chief Phipps for believing in me and bringing me on to the Snoqualmie Police Department. And for those of you in this room tonight that have come to support me, I want you all to know that you hold a very special place in my heart. I do want to give a very special thank you to my wife, Tina. Without you, there is no way I'd be here. To the officers and the staff of Snoqualmie Police Department, I want you to know how excited I am to have been given this privilege to work with you. I look forward to getting to know each other and serving alongside of every one of you. And to the citizens of Snoqualmie and North Bend, it's truly an honor to serve in your communities as your new captain and know that I will dedicate myself to making both of these great cities as safe as possible in the future. And I think the chief wanted me to mention one of my other passions from my other department. For like, I guess, 10 basketball games, I put together a Boots and Badges basketball game, police versus fire. It started out, it started out as a fundraiser. It was a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. So someone, you know, very dear to me, had cancer, and then we started doing the Relay for Life walks. And I put together a police team. And it wasn't too long before I was super disappointed in the low numbers of money that we were pulling in. Something you don't know about police officers, they don't like to do things on their own time. They have to be paid overtime to do it. So I had to figure out a way of raising money. And so I put together this basketball game, and that turned into doing it for the Chief for a Day program. One of my... Here we go. The little guy right there, he was one of my chief for a day. So I helped his family out. In the 10 basketball games that we did, we raised almost $130,000.
Wow.
So, yeah. So who knows what lies ahead in the future here? You know, I might put something together again like that. I think it would be kind of cool. So I want to thank everybody for accepting me into your family and thank you all for being here.
Thanks.
That's the example of the servant's heart I was talking about right there. That's just another example of that servant's heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
They probably thank you for that.
I think we have a larky trade.
Yeah, we probably do.
All right.
Council, I am happy to report that after several months and an extensive search, tonight we will appoint two talented individuals to fill the community development and finance director positions. The first appointment is our community development director, Emily Arteca. Emily comes to us from City of Edgewood and has 25 years of experience in planning. If confirmed, Emily will start July 18th. Council may have a motion to confirm Mayor's appointment of Emily Arteca as community development director.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Lassay. Is there... Council, do you have any questions or comments for Emily? Seeing none, all those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? No. So motion passes unanimously. We welcome community development director Emily Arteca. And we'd like to thank Jason Rogers for his leadership as our interim community development director. We were very much appreciative of all of your work over the last several months. So thank you so much. Harris? There we go. Repeat after me. I, Emily Arteca, have been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council of the City of Snoqualmie...
I, Emily Arteca, have been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council of the City of Snoqualmie...
...to the office of community development director of the City of Snoqualmie.
...to the office of community development director of the City of Snoqualmie.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office...
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office...
...as prescribed by law to the best of my ability...
...as prescribed by law to the best of my ability...
...and will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie...
...and will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie...
...and the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
...and the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is it still official if she mispronounced her name?
Oh, it's already done. It's ceremonial.
Again, my name is Emily Arteca. I'm very excited to be here today. This is a community that's near and dear to my heart. I'm a long-term resident of the East Side, living in Issaquah. I've got, I think you've looked at my background, but I've got about 25-plus years of professional planning experience here locally, as well as in the state of Oregon. Worked on a lot of complex projects and managed a lot of long-term projects. I have specialties in managing people, processes, and projects. And I'm thrilled to take on some new challenges here at the City of Snoqualmie with a wonderful staff and wonderful group of city council members and boards and commissions.
Excellent.
Any questions that I could answer for you?
Are you going to work with a different group of councilmen?
I used the word wonderful.
We look forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you.
Same here. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city. And the second appointment is for finance director, Jen Ferguson. Jen has been serving as our interim finance director since beginning of March. Served as finance director for the cities of Snohomish and Issaquah, and she comes with 30 years' experience in local government finance. If confirmed, Jen will begin August 1st, 2022. Could I have a motion to confirm the appointment of Jen Ferguson as finance director? So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Christensen and second by Councilmember Holloway. Council, are there any questions or comments for Jen? I am not seeing any. So all those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? All right, motion passes unanimously. So congratulations, Jen Ferguson is our new finance director. We'll do the oath of office. Okay, I, Jennifer Ferguson...
I, Jennifer Ferguson...
...have been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council of the City of Snoqualmie...
Having been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council of the City of Snoqualmie...
...to the office of finance director of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington...
...to the office of finance director of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington...
...do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office...
...do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office...
...as prescribed by law to the best of my ability...
...as prescribed by law to the best of my ability...
...and that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie...
...that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie...
...and the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
...and the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. I'm happy to be joining the city team. It's been a pleasure to be your interim director these past several months. And so I look forward to a lot of great work that we have to do. There's many challenges, but yet there's many opportunities for us to work with the mayor, the city council, residents of the City of Snoqualmie, the entire staff team. I've been well-supported by a great number of folks in the finance department. Thank you to Drew Bute and Jerry Knutson, who have supported me in getting immersed. And I look forward to more work as we work on policy enhancements, forecasting, systems development, and of course, the employee experience. I do want to quickly introduce my husband, Brian Ferguson. He's here tonight. And our cute little dog. I just brought her just in case, you know. But that is Lexi. She's a 13-year-old teddy bear. And I'm surprised she hasn't barked since I've been up here. But nonetheless, I appreciate the trust that you have in me. And I'll protect the public treasury to the best of my ability. And I look forward to a lot of great work and happy to be here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, moving on. At this time, we will provide. Okay, we will provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. First few ground.
Is there something before that?
Yes, there is. My apologies. Mayor Protem, we have some council committee liaison appointments.
Yes, so council members. The Community Development Committee, right now, composed of three members. Self, Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Lasse. And the chair is Councilmember Lasse. The council continues on Community Development Committee, but is, has some increased workload and is looking for maybe some help with the chair duty. Because as you all know, that's above and beyond just being on a committee. The chair duty is extra above and beyond that. And so, to help him with that, Councilmember Johnson has agreed to take on the chair role. And so, tonight, I'm appointing Councilmember Johnson as the Chair of the Community Development Committee in place of Councilmember Lasse. But otherwise, the makeup of the three members will stay the same. So maybe I have a second for my appointment.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Mayor Protem Mayhew and second by Councilor Lasse to appoint Councilmember Johnson as the Chair of Community Development Council Committee. Any discussion? Councilor Lasse?
I just want to thank the Mayor Protem and council for the opportunity to chair the committee the last, well, roughly six months. Unfortunately, you know, work does get in the way sometimes, and I did not want to have that impact. The strong work that's coming up with a new Community Development Director, with the information that we know of coming up through some of our other deliberations we have. And Councilmember Johnson made a perfect choice for doing that and taking on the chair role. So, I'm looking forward to working with him on that.
Excellent. Councilor Johnson?
And I wanted to thank Councilmember Lasse for guiding us as the Chair for these last few months. I've learned a tremendous amount by sort of riding his coattails and sitting in his shadow. But I look forward to the responsibility and I hope to make you proud.
Excellent. Okay, any other comments? All in those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Right, the motion has it. So, Council Johnson now will be the Community Development Chair.
I don't like this at all.
Thank you. Right. Right.
So forget this guy, focus on that guy down there.
Okay, this time we'll provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. Few ground rules, Snoqualmie residents are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes. Please wait to recognize and state your name in city residence for the record. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. And please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, or staff, or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. And please also note that because the city council consideration of the Millsite PCI plan is a closed-record proceeding, where the council considers application based on the record that was made before the city's hearing examiner publicly commented on the Millsite quasi-judicial land use matter will not be accepted. And last, please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all due respect will be afforded to you. So with that, would anyone like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda this evening? If so, if you're in the attendees list, please raise your hand. Or if there's anyone in council chambers? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on then.
Our directions for public comment always take longer than the public comment.
We now, we may now move on to consent agenda. So it contains approval of the June 27, 2022, city council special and regular meeting minutes, and approval of the claims reported dated July 6, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's moved by Mayor Protem Mayhew, second by Councilmember Holloway. Is there any public comment on this item? Please understand that public comments must be related to the topics on the consent agenda. And the limit will be two minutes. I'm looking in the attendees. Not seeing any, and not seeing anyone in the council chambers that is raising their hand. So council, is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no further questions or discussion, we move on to vote. So those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This motion passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved. Now move to committee reports. Council, the next item is committee reports. Are there any reports for Public Safety Committee?
None at this time.
Are there any reports for Community Development Committee?
Am I effective at this point?
Done deal, it's all you.
Right. No report.
All right. So, okay, Parks and Public Works. We, there's a discussion on the agenda regarding history, current scope, and proposed financing of a community center expansion with a pool. With the Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Holloway, like to introduce the topic.
So, as you're aware, on the CIP, we have a community center. Rather sizable item on the CIP. We did review past history and kind of the current conceptual design of the facility, as well as, you know, potential financing of this as part of the committee. Felt that was a good conversation to have here at council. We're going to have more as community center further develops and as CIP develops. So, like to introduce discussion tonight and have at it.
All right, so I'll go ahead and lead this off with what is in the packet. And we have a couple slides to show you, we can have a discussion on it. So included in the packet is a brief history of the community center, including attempts of getting approval for a bond for the building of this center with a pool. During this time, there was several different times it was tried. And it was usually competing with school bonds that were running at the same time. And so, so it became a competition of schools, not pools, was the, was what the, I guess, the mantra of, they wanted the schools and not the pools. The proposal at those points was also a three-lane pool. And during those times, neither the school or the community center expansion and pool passed. So, in the history, also talks about how eventually then the community center was built without the pool. And also included in this, in the packet, is surveys were performed by the YMCA and also a city survey. Both surveys have shown strong support for the expansion and pool. In fact, 70% of the respondents support having a, the expansion with the pool. The slide number one shows the community center expansion project, which is contained in the 2023 to 2028 capital improvement plan. And this, the current facility would expand by 24,000 if you do a three-lane, actually, or 28,000 gross square foot, bringing it to 39,000 square foot if you do six total lanes. And the additional space in the community center would be determined through public engagement. But it would increase like multipurpose and fitness space, improved locker rooms, additional community meeting space, among other things. And the expansion for the pool would be the six lane that could host swimming lessons and swim teams, as well as would also include an outdoor splash pad. Slide two, and just so you know, we also have attending this evening is the, the Executive Director for our local Y, Stephanie Norton Bredle. So if we have any additional questions, she'd be happy to answer them. She's online. Slide two, this is a, shows the cost comparisons. And how do we get from 2019 to 2023? Actually, it's 2022, but it's in 2023 dollars. Where the current cost estimate is $29.8 million. And we have our interim Finance Director Jen Ferguson that can walk through these numbers if you need further clarification on those. You know, the costs significantly increased, but 30% of it was compared to, is due to inflation and increasing construction costs. But it also includes the $1.5 million for a spray park, which was not included in the 2019 costs. It also includes sales tax. And then there's a breakdown on the, down on the far right-hand side, where it talks about like tennis court relocation, which is a lot less than if we put the pool in front of the Y where there, you would have to have excavation, retaining walls and elevators. And that was a well over a million dollars in order to do that. So, we also will continue to explore a funding model where residents would not have to incur new property taxes. And I think if you look at the CIP list, it shows the type of funding that we are considering, which includes sales tax, REIT, state funding and grants, county grants, and a consummative bond issuance. And we do have someone that will be doing a presentation shortly on bond issuance and what it means. On slide three, our communications person put this together. And, you know, the costs that we were looking at, the $29 million is for capital. The city would pay the capital, include and try to fund it through, as we mentioned, grants and other things. But then the Y would take over all future maintenance operation costs and future capital costs. And so, we wanted to get, you know, what does a monthly cost look like? If you had a family of four and you wanted to do swim lessons and you wanted to go work out. But Cyview is proposing to do their pool and they have a bond in August. And so their costs are included in the property taxes up above. But they won't have a workout facility as part of that. And so, so we looked at, okay, what's a local gym that they can, if you wanted to work out, would be comparable? And so, you know, Mount Sinai Sports would be. And so, if you look at our, the total costs for a month, monthly, if you wanted, like I said, the swim lessons for two children, our membership, the Y would be like $144 for two adults and all their dependents. The Cyview is more expensive at 422 versus 394. And this is actually a lower assessed value, so it's probably higher than the 770,000 that's up there. Anyway, so I was trying to give you a comparison of what would the future costs look like? And knowing that we would not be paying M and O or, or capital in the future, that the Y would be paying those. Do you have any questions regarding that or comments? So, Councilor, or Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Oh, just want to make sure I understand this comparison. So, what is the idea here? This would be the cost to a resident of Snoqualmie to use their services of one versus the other? I'm trying to, is that the sort of purpose here?
Right, what we're trying to do is, you know, we were also thinking, we can look at, what is the BOM, if the BOM facility look like in Issaquah? Right, there's, there's costs that, I guess what we're trying to point out is, like BOM has parks and recreation that's coming out of your, your taxes or that you're paying into in order to run that facility, right? So, our cost here shows, right, we're trying to compare it apples to apples. If you can join Cyview or you can swim there, it'll be, will not be a six lane, it'll be the three lane and then some other, I don't know, what type of like, I'm trying to think what type of pool it is, a leisure pool, whatever. Okay. But then you have to go somewhere else to work out. Whereas if you go to the Y and we have a pool, we have a community center that's expanded, we would have workout facilities there and sort of costs $144 a month. That, this is at membership rates this year.
Right, so I want to make sure I understood it. Because a couple of comments, I think maybe are, maybe the comparison should be showing more favorable than this. A couple of thoughts I have, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding the chart. But for a Snoqualmie, so Snoqualmie is not part of Cyview Parks District, and therefore a Snoqualmie resident accessing that facility would pay more. Well, they wouldn't pay property taxes, but they would pay more to access those, those, that facility than a Cyview resident would. So I think, you know, I was kind of zeroing in on that membership, zero dollars. I think, maybe it's not really a membership, but there are fees that are much higher for a non-Cyview resident than for a Cyview resident. And then, so I want to make sure I'm, because I think maybe that's something to think about that would make that comparison more accurate, but also show that it's actually farther apart. The other thing, and I think this is, has always been an extremely important point to me, is that with the Y taking on the operating costs of our community center, the Y does something that a municipal municipality can't do. And that is that they will allow people who cannot afford that $144 to access anyway. And in fact, that can go as low as zero. They work with those and that happens today with people that want to use our existing facility. But they work with people in a very respectful way, a very non-invasive way, to give them access to the facility at an amount that they can afford. And that is, I think, just a fantastic outcome for our community and something that isn't captured by the chart, but I think is very relevant.
Councilor Benson?
Um, yeah, I, and maybe it's on another slide. And I'll, I'll look forward to seeing if it is. But I'm, I'd be curious to know what the cost of this pool is for somebody who's not going to use it. You know, what the, what the per household cost is of having this, this expansion. I'd be very interested in knowing what that is because that would be, that would be useful information. I would also disagree with what you, I absolutely think that what you're saying about what the Y does is at, agree with that statement. I, I would disagree that it's something that a municipality could not do. I think that, I, I think that it's wonderful that, that the Y does that. And I think it's really important and it's a great point, and I'm glad you made it. I do disagree that it's something that only the Y can do.
Councilor Christensen?
I just wanted to raise another point as well, because I think that what the Y does is fantastic. Another thing that is, isn't on the chart, but that would probably warrant consideration as well, is that the Y also operates drop-in childcare so that, you know, parents can come and their kids are going to be well taken care of, they're going to be played with, they're going to have fun with their friends. In addition to that, they offer a lot of community programming for both members of the Y and members of the community as a whole, that as far as I know is offered free of charge. And I think it's very beneficial to the community.
Mayor Protem, or Councilwoman Holloway?
So, two things, one, I believe we are still in some discussions of non-Y membership use of the pool by fee. So beware, there's another option not on the chart here. So beware, there's another option not on the chart here. To your point, there is at least in the current plan, an issuance of consummatic bonds. And those would be, it may not be property tax, but it would be an ongoing expense that we'd have to support for 30 years. Now, it'll be significantly less than what Mount Si is talking here because they're talking the full pool funded through their bond issue. So, but to be apples and apples, we probably want to get that figure, whatever we would expect that consummatic bond issue issuance yearly cost to be in here. As well as consideration for the non-pool membership fees.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yeah, I just quickly want to say, Councilmember Benson's is absolutely correct. And thank you for correcting my misstatement, which is, what I meant to say is that $144 a fee can be and is supported by the Y and would be supported by the Y in a way that the city cannot do. I, what I said was the city can't do it at all, and that's not true. But the city has limitations on what they can do and the Y can do much more in that regard. And that's what I meant to say. So you're absolutely right. But also I think, I was intrigued by your comment because I tend to think about, as I listened to your comment, my initial reaction was, well, the cost would be zero for a Snoqualmie resident that didn't use the Y because they wouldn't be a member, wouldn't pay the fee. And of course, that's not the case, is it? So I just realized that putting a good analysis out that really considers all of the, of the factors here, I think, is a really important thing to do from a community facing point of view here. These numbers are going to, I've been looking at these numbers for many years now. I've been a big proponent of this concept. And I think the numbers will come out very I'll say favorably, but I think, I think there's no reason not to be in sure that we're very transparent and very clear on what the costs are when we're talking to people. So I completely support your idea of let's maybe develop this a little bit further. And as some of the other council members said, maybe we can get this a little more sophisticated perhaps so that we show that, so it's, it's kind of real clear. But I think it's, I do think, Mayor, that a full analysis is going to show even a greater gap than this is showing. So let's develop that more. I think it, it'll be useful to residents.
Great. Councilor LaSae.
Yeah, I'm all in supportive of, of finding, you know, a true comparison. I don't think we currently have a true comparison. I think we're talking about a three lane lap pool in a kiddie splash area, not a aquatics facility, which is what Cyview is talking about. So I think there, you've got to take some of this with that little grain of salt as well is that there's, it's not really a comparison of the two facilities. Our facility is a community center that's operated by the YMCA. It was never developed as a YMCA. So it's a different facility when you, when you refer to it as a, and you try to compare it to other cities that have YMCA facilities. So again, making sure that we're, we're, we're being equally cognizant of what others may be doing and what we may be doing is really important, especially in the public eye if we're going to have support for this. I think the mayor is going to get into some of that too, and what the community looks for. And I think that the community has support, but I think the community wants support for a facility that can be used by students. That can be used as a competition option for, for the schools and other partners that may want to be involved. I think that's something that we are, we are lacking in this, in this option and in this proposal. And I'd like to see that, you know, be a full facility. We, we have, we have too many examples of getting halfway there and thinking partial is good enough. And I think what this, if we're going to go down this route and we're truly going to do what we, I think all believe that the, the community wants, it needs to be a full facility. Needs to have all of the things that, that we talk about, not just peel it back because it may be a little bit too expensive or it may be have, may not have all the, all the bells and whistles. I don't, I don't think we can get there unless we do all the bells and whistles. I'm going to know what that is. So that's my, my two cents.
Councilor Johnson.
I mentioned this in Parks and Public Works, so I wanted to bring it up again here is just that in my experience talking with members of the community, it seems as though there is a not insignificant difference in support between if with a three lane option versus a six lane option. That there's a, a lot more support if we went with six lanes rather than three. And it sounded like in that meeting that administration was, was still actively pursuing, trying to go toward the six lane. The, the more bells and whistles, as Councilmember LaSae said.
Right. And the cost of where you are looking at is the six lane, just saying that. Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Well, Councilmembers, if I could just say, I think the mayor is already aware of this. I am, I agree with the comments about what best serves our community. And I have always felt that a six lane pool, one that is adequate to meet the needs of the high school swim team. Now, I'm a little, I have to be a little careful about that because there is an issue with the swim team, which is there's also as part of that divers. Diving is not part of this proposal. So that, that is an issue, but I've always been in favor of a pool that would be usable by the high school swim team. Right now, they travel an awful long distance very early in the morning. And I think that's something that's sorely missing, not only from our city, but from the whole school district. So I'm, I've always been supportive of that. I think I would have a very hard time honestly supporting a three lane pool. I think let's do what's needed for the community. And I think I'm just echoing others' comments, but let's do this right or or really ask ourselves if we need to wait to do it until we can do it right. But Mayor, just I'm glad you clarified, this sounds like what I'm referring to as doing it right. And so I think that's fantastic.
Councilor Johnson.
How, how deep is this pool planned to be? I mean, are we talking like a six foot pool or a 14 foot pool? I mean, how close are we toward dive limits? Is that anywhere near possible or would that just completely balloon the costs digging that deep?
It, you have to add a whole, we've had lots of discussion on, you have to add a whole nother tank for diving boards. And so, and usually the Y does not take on that type of liability risk, right? Councilor, Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yeah, one other thing in that regard is the operating cost changes dramatically with a pool that can handle diving as compared to, so there's the construction costs, which is very significant, very significant. But even more so, there's the operating costs. And remember, our model here is no M and O, no maintenance and operations paid for by the city taxpayers. That would be paid for by those who use it, the, the members. Although I point out again that anyone, no one would be denied use. No city resident would be denied use because they couldn't afford it. So we're getting full access, but the point is, there, I got lost in my answer. Or my point. Yeah, so the, yeah, the construction cost is dramatically higher. And the operating cost is dramatically higher, which somehow would have to get paid for through that membership fee. So I think it's not an insignificant cost because I think probably most of us agree if, if it were, why wouldn't we do that? But it is very significant.
Councilor LaSae.
So I just, I just want to try to make sure this is clear because of this taken, this document that was handed out and taken. It's not clear that this says six lanes. It says, it mentions a pool alternate, which is, I don't know what that is. It says plus three lanes, which is that plus three lanes, meaning it's three? Or is that plus three lanes, meaning something else was three and this is six? I think, I think that's sort of messaging out to the community. This is where it gets confusing is, is what, what is the message? What is, what is the proposal?
So the pool alternate.
I'm almost done.
Okay, sorry.
So we have a, you know, we have these sorts of numbers that come out there, but they're, they're independent of any sort of proposal. And this document will get shared around and people will say, well, look, see, it's only two, three lanes. It's only three lanes or, oh, it's, no, and somebody else will argue, no, it's six lanes, but it's more money for six lanes. And you really don't know what the proposal is. And, and even in the description of the aquatics and cost, it was described as three lanes. So I'm, I'm just, these are the kind of things that create confusion and lead to people voting no for these sorts of things. And, and so I just encourage there to be some, some consistency in, in the message.
Right, and we can identify that a little bit better. When it says pool alternates is plus three lanes, so that is the additional cost for three additional lanes. We have to have it separated out because our hope is that, you know, Snoqualmie Valley School District would like to use, use the pool for competitive swimming. And so hopefully they'll help share the cost, such as if they paid for the three additional lanes, which would be up to $3 million.
See, that's a great explanation. That's the kind of messaging that, that, you know, people that listen to the recording hopefully will hear.
Right.
And that's, that's the reason why, you know, that, that's sort of upfront, very direct. We're trying to accomplish this and these are the steps to get there.
Right.
I think it's going to be important.
Councilor Holloway.
Well, I believe what is in the CIP right now is three lanes contingent upon partnership or external funding for those additional three lanes.
The total in the CIP is six lanes.
Does it, does it assume partnership funding?
It assumes we're going to be getting different grants and we'll negotiate different grants. And we'll hope that we'll get the school district, we'll hope we get King County levy and a variety of different funding. So it is, is six lanes.
Agreed. It does assume external partnership or funding to cover the additional cost of those three lanes.
Right, it's, yeah, if you look at the CIP, I think it says King County Levy or SVSD, up to $4 million for grants.
I'm just, I hear a lot of, let's go get. Again, I wanted to, the understanding was those additional three lanes contingent upon some external funds coming in. Unless the council wants to make a decision and says, no, we're going six lanes with or without extra, with, with or without external funding partner. And that's the plan. But I haven't heard that tonight because that's a couple of million dollar discussion.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yep, Mayor, I think these slides on the history are very, very helpful. Thanks for putting them in. I think one thing that, and maybe I'm missing it, but is not, I think in these slides, which I I've always thought is very relevant, is what the population of Snoqualmie was at each of the time those bond attempts. And not just what the population of the city was, I think that's very relevant because it means how much per resident. So when they were talking about certain dollars, each person or each family was sort of trying to figure out what, you know, what that impact was to them. So I think that's relevant. But also what's relevant is how many kids we had, how many children, how many under 18s? We have a heck of a lot more now, like double now than the last time that bond was attempted. So as we've seen, as the community's grown and there are more children in our community, school bond levies have been more successful. And I think that that would be very relevant because this, I believe, would be fairly heavily used by families and children. So I think, I think that population information is probably also very relevant to the history. And we might want to add it to the slides.
Right, that sounds good.
Just to follow up on something that you said, Councilmember, or Mayor Proton. We tried to use the proverbial family of four as our basis of comparison. What I'm hearing is, is that we need to be a little more sophisticated about that. And not just, you know, have it be, you know, two parents and two kids. But do a more of an analysis of how the community has evolved and changed over time. Show that and show now when those votes took place, where these, these population was, what kind of families, where sized families live here, as much data as we can dig out of census data or whatever. And include that on our analysis. Is that, is that what you're?
That's exactly it, Mr. Sarwin. And I think, although, let's be always careful to be concise, right? So glean through that data and try and make that as concise a story as we can. But I think many people, when they look at the history, one of the thoughts that goes through their mind is, well, if someone said no before, I might be leaning towards saying yes, but what am I missing? Am I missing anything? So helping them kind of evaluate, oh, that's what's missing. It was a different community. Helping them see that factor might be very helpful to their decision making.
Right. Hey, do you have any more discussion or do you want to learn more about, or learn about the Muni Bonds discussion, presentation?
Sounds pretty exciting.
Right. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for this, good discussion. And we'll put some more information together. So the next item on our agenda is the Muni Bond Market and Public Financing. And our Finance Director Jen Ferguson, do you want to introduce our guest and tell who we, who we are meeting tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we have a discussion and a presentation on the Muni Bond Market and Public Financing. This is what we're proposing as part of the funding for the community center. And we have Thomas Topher, who's with us from PFM. He are our bond financial advisor. And it's my understanding they have worked with the city on other bond measures. And so we have Thomas here to provide an overview and presentation of some possibilities for that bond that the council would, will be considering at a future date. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, good evening. I'm Thomas Topher, I'm with PFM Financial Advisors. We've worked with this city since 2014 and on a number of different financings. I'll go over about some general public finance about financing capital projects for cities. Let me see if I can go to the first slide. There we go. So once municipal finance, we all typically hear about corporate finance, right? When a corporation borrows monies for projects. Municipal finance is the terminology when municipalities, cities, counties borrow funding, funds for projects. We often use the term municipal bond, that's really just another way of saying a loan. The city or a county typically secures their debt by the, with the full faith and credit of the city. And that's the, you're putting behind the, the loan, the full taxing power of the city. And I'll speak more about different options there in a little bit. Or another common method is to issue debt that's secured by revenue bonds. For example, the city issued water and sewer revenue bonds in 2018 that are secured by the revenues from that system. One important aspect of municipal debt is that it's tax exempt for governmental purposes. So you are benefiting from lower interest rates than a corporation would. So thinking about two entities that have the same credit quality, a corporation or a city, the city would typically borrow at a lower rate because the interest earned by the investor is exempt from, from, from income taxes. So there, there's a benefit of that. Now, why do governments borrow funds? You know, typically if you can afford the capital projects, don't, don't borrow for it. But in many cases, there are you know, advantages of borrowing funds. One of it is really to advance a project, right? You could, we talked about this community center and you could save another three, four, five, however many years it takes to have those funds available. Or you could deliver this project sooner by borrowing for that project. Another item that came to my mind when I saw the presentation was the escalation of cost, right? So you, we always think about the cost of financing. We think about the interest cost associated with the bond and the loan. But another cost that associate with waiting is the inflation cost, right? The cost of construction, cost of labor going up over time. So you have to evaluate that, those, those two costs against each other. And lastly, intergenerational equity is a big factor, right? So who is really using those funds and who's repaying it? Should you be saving for 10 years? Taxpayers of all those 10 years are basically paying taxes. You're, you're saving this money and then you. then you accomplishing this project, but who's using this project, right? So alternatively, paying debt service, the, you know, citizens who are actually using the facilities are going to pay for the facility. So there is some equity associated with that. I'll go to the next slide. So what kinds of debt can cities issue? So we've talked about voter approved debt earlier. So you can go out to the voters and ask for them to support this project. You would go out and say to a certain amount of debt you want to issue for this project, you're providing them with an estimated cost of increased property taxes, and voters can decide whether they want to support this bond issue. That would be, that would require a 60% yes vote. And with that, you would receive, if they approve this project, there would be an excess levy, so a new property tax levy that will support the debt service payments of this new debt, and it will not affect your regular levy, right? So it would be completely new income and would be solely available to pay the debt service for this facility. This type of debt is limited to 2.5% of the assessed value, and I'll speak about those limitations in a little bit. I'll go to the next slide. So very common are the issuance of non-voted debt, so you talked about earlier council manic debt. In this case, the city council can approve debt issuance to be, again, paid from city revenues, and it's secured by the full faith and credit of the city. So you will promise to bondholders that you're going to repay this debt and budget the debt service as part of your budget every year. This will be something you can approve again at the city council level, you don't need to go out to the voters for this issuance. We often see that a city will look for additional new revenues to support a project, so you may be looking for an additional sales tax or an additional revenue stream for which you may need voter approval. So for some sales tax revenues, you may be able to get voter approval, the hurdle is only 50% to achieve and generate that new revenue stream. And with that, you can use that revenue stream to repay this general obligation debt. I'll go to the next slide. This is a brief overview of your, the city's debt that's outstanding. So the first graph up there shows your UTGO debt, so that's its unlimited tax general obligation debt, that's the voted debt. And you see there that the last payment is this year of existing debt, so beyond this year, there's no voted debt for, that's direct city debt outstanding, that's only 244 outstanding at this point. And this debt was originally issued for a new fire station in, I believe, 2002. And we have refinanced it a few times, so the interest rate that's currently outstanding is just, you know, 1.9%, so relatively low rate. On the bottom half, you see the limited tax general obligation debt of the city, it's about $2.5 million of outstanding debt, and this will be repaid by 2030, and then there will be no more such debt outstanding. I'll go to the next slide. So a question we often ask is, you know, what's our debt capacity? How much can we afford, right? How much can we do? And there are different types of limitations. One is a legal limitation. You are limited by the state constitution and statute that you cannot issue more than 1.5% of assessed value for council manic debt, and 2.5% of all of your general obligation debt for general purposes. I'll show you those calculations in a little bit. There's also a policy limitation, and typically, you know, cities' debt policy would add certain limitations. For example, you may decide that you never want to issue more than 90% or 80% of your legal limit, because you want to keep a certain percentage available for emergencies, right? If you needed those. And then lastly, most importantly, is what's really financially affordable. So, you know, what, how are you going to repay this debt? Here's a calculation of the current legal limitation for the city. You see on the top half, the city's assessed value for 2022, about $4 billion, that's, by the way, about four times as much as it was in 2002, when you had that issuance. Your limit there is $60 million, you already issued $2.5 million of that council manic debt, so $58 million is legally available, right? Just because it's legally available doesn't mean you have the resources to repay it, right? That's another question we need to think about.
Thank you for that.
And the second part of it is really this total general obligation debt, that's 2.5% that is inclusive of the 1.5%. So in total, you can issue, in theory, at least $101 million for general purposes. There's also an additional, I should finish this table, you have, as you saw on the prior table, 240,000 of UTGO debt outstanding and 2.5 million of LTGO debt, so we'll deduct that from your availability, and that leaves you 98 million there of theoretical, of legal limitation or capacity.
Just a quick question. How do these numbers then apply to the, I'm going to use the wrong terms, but the bonds that we issued back in 2018, I think it was, yeah, 2018? How do these numbers compare to what we have outstanding already?
Right. So those water and sewer revenue bonds are not subject to this limitation. So this limitation is really because this is debt that's secured by property taxes. And the water revenue bonds, or water and sewer revenue bonds, they are secured by your water and sewer system revenues, which is separate from the general fund.
Thank you.
And those bonds are, have a different limitation that is built into the bond covenants, into the financial covenants, that says you can only issue a certain amount, while you still have to prove that you can cover the debt service payments from the revenues from those utilities.
You're a really good explainer.
Took me a while to get used to speaking in front of normal people again. It's been, it's been.
You're really good at this.
Appreciate that. Also, I wanted to mention, there is another 2.5% for utility purposes that can be voted geodemp and for open space purposes. We didn't mention that here because we focus on the general purposes, and that's available. We looked briefly at the debt policy of the city. It's currently in the process of being updated, so I'll just highlight a few items here. You generally say there that you're not going to issue debt unless you really need to issue debt, right? If you have other sources available, you're going to use those other sources. There is, another purpose is there if you have matching funds, right? Let's say you are receiving a grant from an entity, but they're requiring you to match those funds. So maybe in that case, you might need to borrow money, at least for a period. And catastrophic conditions, so emergencies, that is another item. The last bullet point there is important, you wouldn't want to issue debt that's for a longer period than the useful life of the facility, right? If your facility is only in place for five years, you don't want to pay for it for 20 years. Okay. Here's, here are a couple of numbers related to the community center. So based on the capital plan, we understand that $7.9 million is kind of the gap at this funding gap that needs to be financed. So we calculated a couple of examples. So on the left side, you see a 10-year term, and on the right-hand side, you see this repaid over 20 years, and it could be repaid over 30 years, yes.
Sorry, I just got confused with the numbers. You said, what's the funding gap, you said?
I got it at 7.9 million.
Oh, that's what the 7.9 is.
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
The total cost is larger, right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I just heard a different number, thank you.
So, I will show, in those columns, you see that under fiscal year 25 and plus, that means over those next several years, there's about $1 million of annual debt service that would be estimated at this point. And we estimate debt service, since this, these bonds wouldn't be issued until 2024, we add a cushion to the interest rate because we don't expect that the market's going to be the same in two years from now. And again, you'll see what happens, that $1 million is what you would have to pay over 10 years. If you spread it over 20 years, there'll be only $600,000 annually, so you reduce the annual cost. But if you look at the total debt service, clearly, if you pay for a longer period, it's going to be a large amount of interest paid, total cost to the citizens. Any questions about those numbers? Yes.
You made a comment a minute ago about how you would not want to finance a structure that only has a five-year lifespan over a 10-year period. What is, is there a, is there a general rule of, about how long you want your project to, your project's useful value to be compared to how long you're paying for it?
Yeah, so there isn't exactly a rule for it, but there are some, there are some, actually some, tax law prevents you from issuing tax-exempt bonds that is longer than 120% of your useful life. But in this case, so you're funding a facility that you're expecting to be in place for, what, 20, 30 years at least? So you could finance it for 30 years, right? If you're only financing the equipment in the facility that's only used for five years, then you wouldn't want to finance this over 20. So it depends on what you're financing and what is the useful life of that financed asset. When we talk about water and sewer pipelines, those typically last for 50 years, right? We don't issue necessarily 50-year bonds, we actually typically do 20- or 30-year bonds, but we know that, you know, the life could be even longer than that.
So it's different depending on the project, and that's not unusual to have, it's not unusual, for example, to pay for 20 years on a fire department.
On a fire station.
That, on a fire station, that after 20 years, the fire chief's come and you say, I want two more of these in two totally different places. That's not unusual?
That would not be unusual.
Okay, all right, good, then I won't have a talk with him.
But, yeah. Right, and at the end of the day, so it's both the useful life that will determine it to some degree, but also then the budget, right? So if you, if you say, I can repay this over 10 years, and you're comfortable with that, you can condense that, right, and really repay that sooner. And once the debt is falling off, like you have currently, in 2030, some of your debt is falling off, there's additional capacity again, right, to issue new debt. Just graphically, the same message really, that shows you how the, you know, how this debt looks like, in green is the new debt on the side with, for 10-year term, on the right-hand side in blue. We did show the same for a larger amount, just because we hear that some of the funds may be not secured yet, right? So you may be, question is, are you receiving all the grants for this? Is the fundraising, is the fundraising going to be successful to the level that you expected to be? So this is, is just a number, 15 million, it's not going to be that number, but it gives you an idea of what happens if it is substantially larger, what would be the cost? That was really my quick presentation about the municipal finance. Any questions?
Yeah, could you go back to the slide? You had a slide that showed our current debt and when the repayments were sort of falling off. Yeah, so I've always thought this is interesting. So I'm not at all saying I'm in favor of going to the voters to ask for more property tax. I'm not saying I'm not for that, I'm not saying I am for it, I'm just pointing out some numbers, which is that often, when you have a bond like we had for the fire station, so voters have voted to increase their property taxes, and they're used to paying that property taxes level, that often there's sort of a thinking that says, hey, as you come to the end of that repayment period, that's a time to have a discussion with voters about, hey, you're used to paying this level. Here's, you're about to not have to pay that, but if you're willing to continue paying what you're paying, here's a project that you might want to support, that that's sort of a discussion you can have with voters that's a little different than you're used to paying X, and now we want to increase it to Y. And so seems to me that that's relevant to our thinking as we think through, how are we going to find, fund this thing? If we do this, if we take some debt, do we want to talk with the voters about increasing their taxes? Sort of this whole notion is, well, you know, this, there's an argument that this is a time to have a discussion like that because they're about to have an existing, an existing levy that they're used to paying is about to fall off, maybe that's a good timing to have a discussion like that.
Constable Benson?
I think that's absolutely true, that this would be a good time to have that conversation. I think one of the things that's going to enter into that conversation is the difference between a fire station and a pool. Certainly, a pool is something, a community, a community center pool is something that any and all could access, fire station is something that nobody is willing to not have. So they're different, you know, they're apples and Volkswagens in that respect, but I think your point that this payment is going away is one thing. I think it is also worth considering the fact that we have been told by the fire chief that he really does need two other fire stations to do his job the right way. And it would not be inappropriate, in my opinion, for that also to be part of this Not to mention the fact that we are also living in a time where everyone is having the experience of paying a whole lot more for things that they paid less for within easy memory.
I thought you were going to say experience with fires, I was glad that you didn't say that. A whole lot more people have experienced with fires.
And I agree with your point, however, he has not requested it in the CIP for the next at least six to 10 years. So right now, we're talking about community center and pool.
Fair enough, fair enough. And I think, I think that's a valid point, but I think we can all agree that this community center would not be paid off in six years.
Do we have any more questions regarding municipal bonds or anything else?
Just a sort of technical question. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mayor.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
I read your mind, sorry. I could see you were looking at me. It's sort of a technical question, but do you have any thoughts on the interest rate that you think, you gave some example interest rates that might be achievable for a 10 and a, what was the other one, 15?
10 and 20, yes.
10 and 20. What is your thought about the relationship of those interest rates to expected inflation for those periods? Is expected inflation, as you think about those rates, higher or about equal to or lower than those rates in your, in your mind?
I would say that between now and 2024, it's likely that inflation is going to be exceeding the interest rate, right? But beyond that, you know, you'd expect inflation to be, to be more normalized at that point. So, and it could, you know, it's such a hard one to speculate at this point. We see control yet, it will take some time, but by 2024, who knows? We might be in a recession, right? We might be in an moment when interest rates come back down at that point.
The reason I ask is, it just struck me when you were saying that, that there's an interesting math conclusion there, which is, geez, if inflation rates running at higher than those interest rates, that's a win for the.
If you can accelerate the project, then, right?
Yeah.
Constable Lassie?
That's interesting that everything's resolved with a math problem. But I think my question, at some point, this council's going to have a conversation, either at a really small level and it goes away, or at a very deep level, about whether we go, whether there's a, this is funded by councilmatic bonds or by a public vote. What can you tell us in terms of, from a financial and financing standpoint, or maybe some pros and cons from a financing standpoint versus, of one direction versus the other?
Yeah, actually, the.
Yeah, actually, the the interest costs will be hardly different, maybe not different at all. The, you know, from a, the investors will will appreciate the voted bond a bit more, but they will probably not pay a better interest rate for that than the full faith and credit of the city is behind both bonds, basically. So I don't think you'll see necessarily a financial benefit from the voted bond. It could be. So sometimes there are situations where the cities are at such a high cost level already that it is that the city's credit may not be great. But if you can get a new access levy that's entirely independent of the city's budget, then that could have a better credit quality, right? So there could be an advantage to that. Just trying to think what what else to point out there, but yeah. In theory, the the interest cost shouldn't be higher.
So it goes, just quick follow. So it goes back to your comment with Mayor Potem here was it's timing. It's interest rate timing. It's getting at your magic eight ball, figure out when the best time is. And if that matches one way or another, it's really about hitting the market at the right time.
Would be great if you can find always the right time, right? It certainly saves you a lot. And, you know, the vote to get to voters obviously will take you longer, right? The process will take longer and you have to really time that out. By what time will you be able to do that?
Mayor Potemehu?
Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong. When I heard the question, my thought of the answer is with a voted bond, we get a revenue source, a new revenue source to pay off the debt. If we do it council manic bond, the source of repaying the debt is our existing revenue sources. So I think that, to me, is the big difference. When you look at our CIP, they built it with an additional revenue source, which means they built the CIP with the idea that we would go out for a voted levy. If we didn't do that, then the math changes because that that additional revenue stream isn't there anymore. And now we have to figure out, okay, that means there's less revenue for all other projects. So I think that's where it comes down to is you, with a voted bond, you get new revenue to pay it off because it's additional levy that the voters are saying, yes, you can you can collect these additional taxes for me. Council manic, we have to pay it off from our existing revenue sources. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's that's a really big difference, absolutely. That's that's important. If we think about the financing costs, yeah. So the voted debt doesn't affect your budget, right? Your budget is going to be fine. But if you issue council manic bonds, you will have to think about what, you know, what additional revenues can you generate from what source? Or you have to reallocate existing funds to this project.
Just a follow.
So you mentioned that in the CIP, it's voted, it's actually council manic.
How council manic can?
The 7.9 million.
Council manic is going to raise these taxes? There's a revenue, there's a new revenue stream in the CIP for which.
And we can talk about that.
Okay.
At the CIP.
It doesn't change the main point, which is council manic gets to just, yeah. So let's forget the CIP, just the concepts there, there'd be more revenue. Yeah, that was the point I wanted to make.
Counselor Benson?
The the problem that I'm having, and I'm I'm very, very interested in how all of you approach this, including you, Madam Mayor, the thing that I can't figure out is. Okay, Snoqualmie has a history of having these bonds presented to them. Three times bonds have been presented to Snoqualmie for a community center pool and three times they've said no. And I'm. And I know that there are various explanations for why they said no. And you can agree with those explanations or not, but the fact of the matter is three times the voters have said no to bonds to fund this community center. If it, if after that, with the biggest price tag yet proposed for this community center, we as a council then decided, let's go ahead and issue a bond just on our own authority. And doing, yeah, and maybe this isn't the fair way to put it, but do an end run around the voters and issue a bond, the biggest bond yet in order to do this community center pool. How do, how do you square that? That's, that's what I, that's what I'm having difficulty with is how do you say, you know what? Three times they said no, they won't say no this time because they won't have the opportunity to. And we'll figure out how to how to pay for it. At a time when the economy is not something that I really want to count on. But I, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody's opinion on this. I'm genuinely interested in everybody's reasoning behind that. If if you, whether or not you, I mean, nobody knows yet whether they're going to vote yes or no on this. But but if you were to vote yes on this, how would you square that part of it?
Mayor Potemehu?
Absolutely agree with the question. That is a very important question in my point of view. I would point out this, actually, the last time we ran this bond, the voter said yes. The problem is it requires a super majority of 60%. So while 52% said yes, 60% did not. And so one of the things I've struggled with and still don't know the answer in my mind is, yeah, how do you square things? I think that's the right question to ask. Part of my thinking is, well, they did say yes. So it's not really an end run. It's certainly not an end run around the majority. It may be, you know, something in relation to the super majority, but the majority said yes. So I don't know if that's persuasive, but it's something to think about, would be all I'd say.
Can I respond to that? Can I respond to that?
Just saying. Counselor Lassiter, did you have a response to that as well?
Quick correction, it was 55%.
Oops, 55.
Right.
I thought the paperwork said 52%, but regardless.
Earlier, the last one we did was 55.
Yeah, there's.
Can I respond to that, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Benson?
You know, and in California, the law used to be 60% as well. And then one year, right before I moved out of California, they passed a proposition making it 50%. The proposition only required a 50% vote and it was totally bogus. There's a reason that bond measures have a 60% threshold. And it's because of these numbers that get bigger and bigger as the years go by. You know, we saw the difference between a 10-year and a 15-year. It's enormous. And I, I, there's good reason for a 60% super majority and 52%, 55% is not yes when you're talking about a bond.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, looking through the history, it looks like it started with somewhere around a 40% yes. I mean, that's pretty low the first time. Then it bumped up to 52% and then it bumped up to 55%. That's a pretty clear trajectory to me of the citizens of Snoqualmie deciding more and more that they want this. And I'm, I'm concerned with, as you have said many times, the the cost of this is going up all the time. I mean, the last time I looked at this, it was somewhere in the neighborhood between like 12 and 17 million. And now it's so much more. I would hate for this to fail at 58%. And then we come back a number of years down the road and now it's a $50 million pool, a $60 million pool. I'd much rather just say, you know, this is a pretty clear trend of Snoqualmie being much more interested in having this project done. If it failed now by this much, what will we be missing out on? And is that really justified? And could I explain that to the 58% of the people who really want this?
And to your point, so 2008 was also the beginning of the Great Recession. And so they were also running a school bond and that failed. No one wanted, wanted, and I don't know, maybe you can speak to the history of 2008, how many bonds actually passed during that time. But that's when 55% still said yes, even though they had the, I want a huge mortgage, mortgage rate, mortgage issues and things like that. And so I think there's a variety of reasons why it would have failed in 2008. But also our population was a lot less. And again, they had competing bonds going. Mayor Potemehu?
Yeah, just, I think this is a really important discussion. So my view, and maybe I'm wrong, just my view of it is the reason that there's a 60% requirement on a voted bond is because it's an increase in taxes. Whereas a council manic bond is not an increase in taxes. So I can see a situation where someone might say, I'm for this, go ahead and increase my taxes. Maybe someone else says, I'm for this, but please do it without raising my taxes. And I can think of people that say, don't do this. So as I sort of try and work through this, I just try and sort of think about that. And that's how I look at it. I don't know if that's helpful.
And it was also a three-lane pool. Counselor Benson?
No, go with Counselor Lassiter, please.
Well, my, my comment was going to be, I think we've far exceeded the discussion that's germane to this topic in that we're talking about bonds and now we're talking about tax obligations. I know they're connected, but I think we have this topic on the agenda for part of the CIP. My, my comment is, is that I think at some point, this topics might have, there might need to be a discussion around the CIP and whether the pool is a separate topic than the CIP. If we're tying these two to get the CIP and the pool together, are we getting ourselves into a thou shalt have versus this is what we need? And and I'm just concerned about that. But I would like to encourage counsel to continue this deliberation about the pool, but the CIP is only one part of that. And I have, I have concerns that we're tying these things together. And and that might limit our ability to approve a CIP.
Counselor Johnson?
I hate to dovetail into something, but I have another question that's perhaps even more directly related to your presentation here. So if we went for a voted bond, at what point is the interest rate actually locked in? When we write it and we say, this is what we're going to do, we're going to voters saying, this is the percentage? Or do we have to wait until? And then we wait until the results are certified? And then maybe there's something further down the line that I don't even know that actually is the thing where it locks in the rate? At what point in that process of the voted version of this is that rate locked in?
Yeah, so we would try to time entering the market as soon as the votes are certified. So we would like, you have the certification, next day we'll sell the bonds, right? So we would try to do it as close as possible to the, you know, to you having the legal authority to issue these bonds. We can do it before then.
Okay, can I follow up?
Yes.
Yeah. So then if we said, okay, yeah, we want to go to voters, rate so low now, let's just hope that that stays the case versus if we that night voted, yeah, we're going to go to the bond, let's lock in this rate.
That's a big difference, absolutely, yeah. So if you go through the voting voter process, you know, it can take, you know, a long time until you're able to enter the market. If you decided, you know, soon we could come back with a bond ordinance or a resolution here and you could make that decision, you could enter the market within, you know, four, six weeks.
Counselor Christensen?
My question is probably more directed towards city admin. If we decided to go forward and ask the voters, what is, when is the soonest we could even consider putting this on?
Probably winter next year.
Winter of next year?
Yeah, it's too late for November this year.
Yeah, that's, that's what I assumed.
And it'd be special.
Unless we do a special election, which could be February, March, April.
Okay, so we would be pushing back the project then substantially.
Right.
And then we'd be having the increased construction costs likely.
Counselor Johnson?
And then also we would have to perhaps worry about hitting that 40% threshold. Is that correct? 40% of the last and a special election, I don't know how often those hit 40% in Snoqualmie. I haven't looked.
It doesn't very often.
Mayor, I think. Jan McCall?
Because you were talking about February, I'm assuming you're talking about February of next year. That's as far as I know at this point, the school district is also considering a very large bond in February.
During that time, thank you. Okay, any other comments regarding this? Mayor Potemehu?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It's not easy to get praise from my fellow council member for making something clear. So you that you should take that compliment to heart and thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you for having me. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
I'm sorry, was that directed at me? It wasn't clear.
Okay, so we are moving on. Next, next item is Committee of the Whole on AB 22-75, 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan Final Review. Purpose of this agenda bill is council consideration of the proposed CIP. This plan was previously reviewed by Parks and Public Works Council Committee on April 19th, May 3rd, May 17th, and July 6th. It was also reviewed by city council at the, the draft part of it was March 26th, council retreat. We did April 23rd, council tour of the CIP locations. We did in May 31st, special meeting, June 9th, open house to the public. And June 13th, we did the city's council roundtable. So the final adoption is scheduled for July 25th at the city council meeting. And it looks like our budget manager, Drew Bote, is going to open it, open it up and give us a presentation regarding some changes.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for having me here today. I'm just going to go really briefly through a summary presentation that shouldn't take too much long or too long. But to begin with, I want to go through some background for you just a little bit. If we can go to the next side, please, Carson, thank you. The administration brought a preliminary CIP to the council at a council retreat back in March. Since that time, council, you've taken a tour of our CIP locations. We've also presented and reviewed the mayor's proposed CIP. We've had a public open house here in the council chambers with members of the public joining us for an evening to discuss many of the projects. And then we've also had a deliberation last month regarding the final proposed CIP. So with that said, we've been discussing the CIP since March. As the mayor stated, we're hoping for a potential adoption at the next council meeting. But I want to go through some of the changes since our June 13th meeting. And so if we can go on to the next side, please. We have some updated cost estimates for you for two projects in particular, the Kimball Creek Bridges Restoration Project as well as the Meadow Brook Bridge Restoration Project. And I'm not sure if Jeff Hamlin is on the line, but I could discuss some of those with you if you have questions regarding that. In essence, it lowered the cost of the Kimball Creek Bridge Restoration Project because we are moving from a full replacement to a restoration of those two bridges or crossings of the creek right now. But then we've also have increased the Meadow Brook Bridge Restoration Project to account for some of the work that we have to do there. As council has been discussing, the community center expansion project, that has changed. What we've done is we've updated the CIP document to reflect the presentation that Thomas just gave to you. Instead of a 30-year term bond, we're now proposing a 20-year bond. In addition to that, we've included the Snoqualmie Valley School District as a potential source of funds overall for the project. And we've made sure that what Thomas has presented is also, the cost of the bond is also reflected in the CIP document, too. So in terms of the total dollar amounts and the changes from June 13th to the present, the uses overall have decreased from 154 million to 153 million. But sources have also decreased from 169.6 million to 168.1 million. And that's because from some of the work that the Parks and Public Works Department has done assessing the potential for grants, it has been reduced a little bit. Next slide, please. So questions for your deliberation here today? Is this the 2023 through 2028 CIP the council wishes to adopt? If not, what changes would council like to see included in the CIP? Would council like to add capital programs or projects to the 2023, 2028 CIP? Or would council like to delay or remove capital programs or projects from the CIP? Or would council like to delay or remove capital programs or projects from the CIP? We're looking for some thoughts regarding that, a sense of what the overall council would like to do in terms of the projects and programs that we have listed here at the dollar amounts. And that will go a long way to hopefully getting this adopted at the next council meeting. And finally, are there questions that you feel staff have not yet adequately addressed or resolved that you would like answered? Sometimes maybe we haven't quite answered all your questions. And so there's an opportunity, hopefully between now and the next council meeting, to address all those questions as systematically as we possibly can. So in terms of the next steps, next slide, please, thank you, Carson. If council seeks answers to questions or wishes to change the CIP, then staff will need to gather the questions or changes. In terms of changes, we would hope to seek majority support from the council for each proposed change. And so you can kind of think of this as amending the proposed CIP. With any kind of questions you hope, want us to address, we hope to distribute answers as quickly as possible to council in kind of a Q and A matrix. And staff will include any changes in an updated CIP document that would be distributed to council and included on the website. Once again, our proposed adoption date for the 2023 through 2028 CIP is for July the 25th. Council has the opportunity to potentially move that into August if we need to, for example. But then that will also put pressure on the biennial budget as we kind of head into the later summer months. So thank you very much. Just to give you a couple reminders a little bit, next slide, please, Carson. The CIP itself is actually very much like a living document and it's amendable over time. So council may approve a CIP on July the 25th, but there may be the need to actually come back towards when we get closer to the approval of the biennial budget and amend the CIP to reflect the conversations that happened since the first adoptions. And we can do that iteratively. We don't, it doesn't have to necessarily be, you could certainly adopt the CIP this year and then we might need to come back next year in order to amend the CIP. But it is pretty much an ongoing process. So this isn't the first bite at the apple, right, regarding the CIP? It's a continuing document that will bring forward to you constantly within this time period, but also in the future as well. And then secondly, capital programs and projects come back to council for contract approval. So when you approve a project in the CIP, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that the project's going to happen. There are opportunities for council to say yes to a project in a CIP. But once you review the contract for design work or construction, you may want to say no. That's up to council and your guys' decision making regarding that. So it is a plan overall. It's not the all-in, be-all necessarily. So please just keep that in mind. And so with that said, thank you very much. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have, as well as Jen, our finance director, and Thomas is still here as well. So thank you.
Mayor Protemehu?
Yeah, so I have a number of questions and I can, you know, do one and then wait my turn. I, I think overall, I, while that timeline is accurate, the CIP we're looking at today is substantially different than the CIP that came at the retreat. And I, I think, I, I was certainly waiting for this to go through the committee process. And so I, I think this didn't come to council until May 31st. And I apologize, fellow council members, I was on vacation starting on May 30th and missed four weeks. So I'm a little bit in catch-up mode. I have a number of concerns, just broadly. The spending levels by year here are not, are spending levels that the city has never been able to manage at. We've never achieved that level of spending.
Do you know what page you're on or what?
In the CIP, the spending levels in the CIP. So we've never had this level of spending.
Or what chart it is?
I'm just trying to make a point. Mayor, your, your point's right. You know, that needs to be discussed out. So let me just try and make my point and then. So by the way, I did have a conversation earlier today with the mayor and, and expressed to her, not the details, but that I had some concerns. In fact, we've scheduled some time, I think, already over the next week or so to try and go through those details. So I, I will spend the time to get caught up and, but I, I just want to give some broad concepts. The first is we never spent at these kind of levels. And that, at least in these, these early years. And the reason that's relevant to me is not an argument not to do these projects. It's just that if indeed these are going to happen in later years, because we just can't do that much at a time. You know, since I've been on the council, we continually pass these very hopeful CIP budgets. And we just never spend, we're just never able to do that level of spending. That's okay. What it actually means is we actually end up with more capacity to do those projects.
I, I don't, I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't totally understand what you're saying by the, you, you keep saying we've never done spending at these levels. And I can't figure out if you mean we've never spent this much or this little on?
We've never spent this much per year.
Okay. But by, by, by a lot, we've never reached that, that much spending upward or downward?
Yeah, so we've got total uses like in 2023, 16 million, 2024, 34 million. And that's a little off because it's got a big one-time project coming through. But even if you subtract that out, it's at 20 million. So 16 and 20 million, we spend 10, maybe 12. So, and we're down on staffing for the engineers that are needed to actually do that. Now, we make up for that with external. But my point is that if, you know, we have revenue coming in every year. And if the projects happen later than we think they will, the good news is we'll then have more money for those projects. But I still think that our CIP ought to be more, ought to be closer to the kind of spending levels that we sort of realistically could do. So that's one concept I have. The second concept is, I think what's really, really important is what's on page 19. On page 19, the staff's done a fantastic job of showing the recurring sources to pay for CIP and the recurring uses, meaning the programs, right? So our last few years, we've taken all, we've gotten pretty good at taking all of our things that we want to do with CIP and say, here's the programs, street resurfacing, we have to do it every year, parks replacement versus projects that we want to do, like building a new park or that we don't have, or building a community center or expanding a community center, things that are one-time projects. So what I think's very, very important is that our ongoing recurring sources cover our recurring uses. And then whatever's left over is the only source we have in the future to pay for future projects. That plus whatever we've built up in our fund balance, which is a big number. But that's it. Once we spend down that number, the only source to pay for new projects is that excess. So I think it's very important that we focus on that. So my concern, my first concern is that the numbers on page 33, which is the table, the recurring sources number don't agree to the numbers we have on page 19. So that's concerning. I think that should be resolved because I can't, I'm sort of confused about that. The revenue on page 33 shows a revenue source to pay for bond repayment, a revenue source. I, I don't know what that revenue source is. So I don't think we should count revenue unless we're saying what it is and we have an idea how we're going to get it. So I think that should be addressed. And then the last concern I have is I compared the spending for the programs that is in this CIP to the spending for the programs in the last CIP. It's dramatically lower. And so my concern is have adequately funded in this CIP, things like the street resurfacing program here is running five, low to mid 500,000 a year. In our last CIP, that was more like a million a year. And so my understanding is that historically, we've spent around 500,000 a year. That's because we were city, didn't have to do much resurfacing. It was brand new, most of the streets. And guess what? They're all coming up on resurfacing. So I'm just worried about the parks, the sidewalk replacement program in this CIP is half the amount that it was in the last CIP. Yet, we actually went out to voters and asked them to increase the sales tax to help pay for increased level of sidewalk replacements. And then the parks replacement program here is substantially less. And I'm worried about our parks, you know, are we, we've got 39 or 40 parks. And what is our renewal cycle for those? So I would like to see, how does that sort of spread out? And is this level of spending enough? So if we need to, I don't know what the number is. If we have to replace them all every 10 years, then what's the total cost to do that? And we better have one-tenth of that every year in our program. Or if it's 20 years, then one-twentieth. So I'm worried that these amounts have moved so much. And so I'm just worried that if we've got that wrong, then we're either going to underfund our programs or maybe we don't have as much money for the projects as we think we have. So that's what I just want to work through. I've asked Chair of the Parks and Public Works Committee to meet with me, maybe go through some of these specifics. If you guys have gone over this in Parks and Public Works Committee, I just need to catch up to you, that's all. And as I said, I know mayor's going to get herself and staff to help me kind of get through this. So maybe in a week, a lot of my concerns, or maybe all of them are gone. But those are my concerns as of now that I wanted to share with, with council. Because as of now, I would be very concerned about my understanding of the CIP as it sits right now. So, and Mr. Bute, I don't want to put you on the spot to answer all of that here. I think, you know, we'll meet, we'll go through whomever I need to go through with. I think that's probably a better way than sort of presenting you with, here's 50 questions, here's 50 more follow-ups, like in a council meeting. I, I think that's not reasonable expectation. So, but I just wanted to share, that's my point of view right now on the CIP. I understand we're trying to get this done. I support that. So I've got, I got my catch-up work to do over the next couple of weeks.
Councilor Benson?
That's helpful for me because the, the numbers on this CIP are very much like the numbers on all the CIPs I've looked at. So I don't have that same history that you have. So thank you for that.
Councilor Say?
Yeah, I appreciate that insight from my fellow council members. Because the CIP is so closely tied to the budget. I, I'm, I'm struggling with some of the, maybe not the same, at the same way as a, someone, someone that's mentioned here. But at the same time, it's concern over how do I reconcile approval of a budget for the next biennium of 23, 24 with numbers that are way outside of what we've ever spent? And with a source that, you know, the major source of either income for one project or the cost of one project being a big part of that budget and not having a lot of certainty into that's something that's actually going to happen. Because it's not just the CIP. I understand that the CIP can be approved and projects will ebb and flow and slide and move. We've seen that over, you know, in my first term as council, I've seen that over the four years. But the budget doesn't do that. And it's so, that one, one project is so closely tied to the budget. It just has me, I don't know how to, I don't know how to resolve that in my head. That, that amount of money.
Madam Chair?
Councilor Benson?
One other thing that I would say is that Mike Chambliss has been asking for questions about the CIP. And he's been very eager to answer any questions. We on the Parks and Public Works Committee have not asked these specific questions that you're talking about. So I know that Mike's going to want to, want to answer whatever you have to say on that because he'll have insights.
Any other comments? Right, okay. Thank you, Budget Manager Bute.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Drew.
Right. So I think we have a meeting set up this Wednesday. We will sit down and talk through your questions. Okay, next item is Agenda Bill 22-105 is the Revised Biennial Budget Development Calendar. And so this provides a timeline of expected city council meetings, workshops, and milestones for the upcoming biennial budget development process. And at the July 6, 2022 meeting, and after robust and productive discussion with administration covering reserves and fund balances, the FNA Committee, along with administration, is requesting some additional time to review financial management policy. So in addition, and to note some recent discussions with the full council, two special topics and presentations have been added to the calendar as well. Which one was this evening?
Yes, correct.
Right. So, okay.
Oh, hey, council. Here I am again. So we've redesigned the budget development calendar, basically to reflect what the mayor just stated. I want to thank the council members on the FNA Committee for their robust discussion during that time. There was a lot of meaningful work that we accomplished and a lot of takeaways for us in terms of staff and what we need to do to move this forward. But it was, you know, it was a good, good time had by all, I guess, is the best way to describe it. So with that said, we've added a couple additional kind of review dates for the financial policies. And when we get through those review dates, we will bring it back to council for final adoption. Looking forward to that. So with that said, thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselors, a motion to approve this new budget calendar?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protemehu and second by Councilor Holloway to re, to approve this new budget calendar. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Please limit your comments to two minutes.
Please.
I'm looking, I do not see anyone with their hands raised and no one in council chambers. So moving on, are there any questions that you have regarding this budget calendar? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, the Public Safety and FNA Committee, if that's a joint committee, I, I just have some concerns that there could be enough members there to do the business of the city. And I feel a little bit, a little bit weird being left out of that. So I just don't know how comfortable I am with having, what would that be? Like five or six people doing that? So I don't know how others feel.
Mayor Protemehu?
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of doing that as a joint committee. But if we do it, which is what our plan is, it is noticed as a committee of the whole. And I would think, please, all, all council members are welcome. And in fact, please do attend. And I, I think the intent would be that we'll run that so that all council members are involved in that discussion rather than just, you know, sort of five out of seven kind of thing.
That'd make me feel a lot better.
Councilor Holloway?
Well, so keep in mind, we requested that. This is on the special topic of lease or purchase of public safety vehicles, particularly police cars, which was our rather enjoyable discussion last time and council here, okay? So we asked for this joint meeting, they've set it up. They're doing what we asked. That is focused on lease versus buy police vehicles in that discussion. The committees may need to break off and do their regular work or public safety may have its regular time. I think they do. And then FNA can carry on after we get through that. But we do need to get through the discussion of lease versus buy to give the police department some direction. The other part is, it is, like you said, committee of the whole. Come one, come all. We'll have cookies.
There will be cookies? I want to renew my objection that we don't have snacks at these things.
It'll be chips ahoi.
This is ridiculous. And if you're going to have cookies at this one when I'm not even here, I object. And if you're going to have cookies at this one when I'm not even here, I object.
Thank you.
I object.
Okay.
Nay!
Okay, any other comments regarding the budget calendar?
How we know it gets really riled on cookies?
Right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
No.
All right. Okay, so this brings me to the mayor's report. I think Carson has a slide to put up. So I would like to thank Larry White for his 24 years of service to our community and congratulate him on his retirement. Larry joined Snoqualmie in 1998 as a parks maintenance worker. When Larry began working for the city, we just had two parks, one was Riverview and a very informal railroad park. We now have over 40 parks. That very year was the first year that the Snoqualmie Ridge homes were starting to be built. He also regularly pitched in to help Parks and Public Works, or the Public Works Department, which at that point only had seven employees. In 2004, Larry was promoted to Parks Lead and then to Crew Chief, Park Supervisor in 2008, a role that he has mastered over the past 14 years. During this time, some of the major park accomplishments, thanks in part to Larry's dedication, were the Jeannie Hansen Park, the Skate Park, and the soon-to-be all-inclusive park at Centennial Fields, which he was a huge champion for. Larry is also the reason why the city offers a baby grand piano in the Railroad Park gazebo. The piano was donated and Larry ranges for it to be placed in the gazebo at certain times of the year. We held a celebration luncheon for him last week and like just to congratulate and thank Larry for his service and have a lot of fun in his retirement. So. The other thing, there you go. On July 4th, we had a fantastic event in our community park, thanks to the Snoqualmie Ridge ROA for the fun parade that had well over 1,000 participates. I saw some of our council members', young children there. We also had bouncy houses, food and games, and thanks to the Church on the Ridge for the red, white, and boom celebration, which included more fun festivities and fantastic fireworks show. It was a great overall celebration and brought a sense of community to our city. This is also, it also required a lot of volunteer and city staff participation. So thank you to our fire, our police, Parks and Public Works Communications Group, and our community liaison and others that I may not have mentioned. Thanks for your time and dedication. Okay, so these next couple of months will be busy with our biennial budget in Mel Site, so please be sure that everyone comes prepared for each meeting and let's hopefully try to stand on, on schedule, on the calendars, because there are certain deadlines that are legally required. So we need to keep focused on, obviously, the budget and also the Mel Site. Our next meetings on July 19th will be the combined Public Safety and FNA Committee Meeting to review the take-home cars. And then following that would be a discussion by FNA Council Committee to review, review proposed financial policies. And July 25th, we also have this special workshop for Mel Site, followed by council meeting, where we're scheduled for the adoption of the final. July 26th will be a workshop, special workshop for the Mel Site. Again, we will send out invites for those. Chris Miller will be our interim IT Director. Our IT Director Kevin Smith is no longer with the city. And on that note, I will turn this over to City Administrator Sourwine, who will comment on the department reports.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. The hour is late, I will attempt to be brief. As always, I encourage you to read through the department director reports that are included in your packet. I just want to hit a couple of highlights in each of them. Starting out with the Administration Department, our Communications Division has made some really significant increases and improvements to our social media outlets. We've got, we've launched our new website, and we're also doing a really good quarterly employee newsletter. And one of the themes you'll see through this is, you know, we're really trying to develop and expand, you know, our work with our employees. So looking at our community liaison, we've dealt with the Historic Downtown Merchants Association, going to their monthly meetings, also the Snow Valley Chamber Commerce. We had a couple of great events so far. I really enjoyed the Big Truck Day, I don't know how other people felt about it. And also been, also our community liaison has coordinated with the mayor to do visits to businesses in the community. So we're reaching out to individual businesses. Our Human Resources Division is starting to work on a compensation classification study for all of our teams to represented employees and unrepresented employees. And we've started doing what I call stay interviews, where we're actually interviewing individual employees, and we're asking them, what would cause you to stay in this organization? What would make, what would make you want to make this Snoqualmie the place where you have your career? And really develop that existing workforce. Over the last six, eight months, we have done an excellent job of bringing in a number of very quality, high-quality folks into this organization. Now our job is to keep them here. So that's what we're working on in that department. Community development, just to highlight a couple of the projects they're working on, Design Review Board, the Planning Commission sitting as a Design Review Board, has reviewed and approved the design for a proposed commercial building, the Snoqualmie Ridge Two, Platte 29. This is a new, a small subdivision of 13 lots. And of course, we talked about the Snoqualmie Mill earlier. I don't want to forget our new senior planner, Diana Reed. Some of you, I think, had a chance to meet her. If you haven't, please come by City Hall and get a chance to talk to her. Our Finance Department now has been moving forward on our one huge project, the Enterprise Resource Planning System, or as I call it, the ERP project. And, you know, this is a multi-year project to really upgrade just about everything we do in our Finance Department. We're working on getting those funds distributed for the American Rescue Plan, and also the new financial policies, new reporting, and of course, the biennial budget in the CIP, which we talked about this evening. Our Fire Department report includes a number of metrics that are actually really kind of fascinating if you're a geek like me to look through. The incident counts that they've had, also their transports, what training they're doing, and what they're doing to try to reduce the risk within the community, not only to respond to calls, but also reduce the risk that people face. Our IT Department has implemented the Darktrace Cyber Security Service that was approved by the council. And also, we're working on security cameras and access control systems throughout the buildings. Public Works always is front and center. Mike gets all the time, gets a lot of quality time at council meetings. The one thing I want to point out is that our urban forestry staff actually took the mayor and I on a really cool tour of what the forestry projects are within the city, how we're using urban forestry to reduce storm drainage, and also improve different neighborhoods. It's amazing how much work that they're doing out there. And then, last but not least, our Police Department, again, for statistical people like me, you have the calls for service, response times in both Snoqualmie and North Bend. We sworn our new captain, and hey, something I'm very proud of, and thank you, chief. We only have, we're only have four vacancies right now. So, way to go, chief. And then, of course, they also list some of the community events and things they're involved in. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have, or also with the questions for the department directors. And let me just say on a personal note, I've been here for a whole seven months now, which means I think I figured out where the bathroom is. Drew has the best sense of humor in dealing with councils of any person I've ever met, and I really appreciate that.
We proved that with that shirt. Got a great haircut, can I say?
Thank you, City Administrator Sourwine. Thank you. Moving on, are there, next item is commission or committee liaison reports? Anything to report? Seeing none? All right. Okay, now we have, next item is Executive Session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101, three little eyes, to discuss potential litigation regarding legal risks of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion of litigation or legal risks is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. The city council will take a five-minute recess and then reconvene at approximately 9:25 upstairs in the conference room. City Attorney Sturink, how much time do you think that we will need for the executive session? And who should attend?
The attendees should be yourself, mayor, City Administrator Sourwine, myself. I would estimate, let's say, 25 minutes for executive session.
Move to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock?
Second.
Is moved and extended, moved by Councilor Lasey, extended by, well, better, Mayor Protem Mayhew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we will at least go past 10, but hopefully we won't have to. Okay, so 25 minutes? Okay, so we will meet upstairs in the conference room in five minutes. Okay, okay, the council has returned from executive session. It is 9:54 PM. Councilor, is there a, action will be taken after the executive session? Is there a motion? Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Mayor, move to approve the draft separation and release agreement dated July 11, 2022, between the city and an employee, and authorize the mayor's son.
Second.
Okay, there was a motion to approve what Mayor Protem Mayhew said, and second by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Just to make sure that the minutes reflect, I think, some precise wording.
Yes, absolutely. So we do have that wording that we will include in it, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Who's going to move to adjourn? Second.
Hey, there you go. It's moved by Mayor Protem Mayhew and second by Councilor Benson to adjourn. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we adjourned, thank you so much. Have a good evening.